I guess I should turn this on, right? We'll begin with the singing of Oh Canada. We won't be singing, but we'll have Oh Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
It's ready here. Okay. Roll call, please. Counselor Mackey. Counselor Gamble. Counselor Burley. Counselor Carlton. Counselor McQueen. Counselor Desai sends his regrets. Counselor Little. Counselor Patterson. Warden Hicks. Counselor Columbus. Counselor Kivany. Counselor Body. Counselor O'Leary. Counselor Woodbury.
Present.
Counselor Millen. Counselor Soever. Counselor Sampson. Counselor Robinson. Counselor Hutchinson. We have all members in attendance. Counselor Woodbury is attending virtually. Counselor Desai is absent and Counselor Little is attending in his place. Thank you very much. We'll proceed next with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality and culture of the Ania Shinnabeck, the Six Nations of the Grand River, the Howden Ashani and the Wendat, Wyandot, Wyandot peoples on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Meti and Inuit whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all as treaty people live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all of its diverse peoples. Okay, council, is there any declaration of interest, decinieri or otherwise? Seeing none, we'll proceed, but if one does arise during the course of the meeting, I would ask you to declare it at that time. Okay, we're on to item number six, adoption of minutes. Six A is county council and committee of the whole minutes dated November 25th, 2021. I need a mover to put that. Counselor O'Leary moves, seconded by Counselor Milne. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor? Is there any opposed? That is carried, thank you. Item six B is committee of management meeting minutes dated November 23rd. And I need a mover to put those minutes. Counselor Robinson moves, seconded by Counselor Mackey. Thank you. Any discussion? I called a question and all those in favor? Any opposed? That too is carried, thank you. Item C is the CAO Performance Evaluation Committee Minutes, which are dated November 19th. I need a mover, please. Counselor Columbus and Counselor Patterson seconds. Any discussion on that? I call the question, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. And D is the CAO Performance Evaluation Committee Closed Meeting Minutes, which were also dated November 19th. Mover, please. Counselor Body, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson. I need, well, we'd have to go into closed session. I'll simply call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. We have no closed meeting matters. Move on to item number eight. Eight A is the Board of Health Minutes, which is dated October 22nd, 2021. Dr. Era is with us. I'll get somebody to just put it on the floor, please. Moved by Counselor Millen, seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Dr. Era.
Thank you. Good morning. Congratulations, your worship. Congratulations to the entire council and Crepeurs for your leadership. Good morning, council. The situation, or not the situation, sorry, the minutes from October had a significant point, which is the, the return to a certain level of normality in the business of public health. And that, that is mostly what was on the agenda. The update about COVID at the time remains consistent with the update at this point. Mainly, I would say, the number of cases is quite manageable. The number of outbreaks in, in sectors that are vulnerable or sectors that have high impact like hospitals, long-term care, retirement homes is, is only one outbreak in a school, minor outbreak that is scheduled to be cleared in the imminent future. So the situation remains stable from COVID point of view. Today, we received the results. We identified the first case of Omicron, which is a different variant. And there is the concern nationally and internationally about the significance of this variant. Your worship, in, in the management of emergencies, there is a saying that I heard during my training. There is a time to run, a time to slow down and walk, and the time to stop and reflect or observe. And I believe the third one applies in this case. The knowledge about this variant is still building. We don't have the full picture of the significance of it, whether it's epidemiology or the related transmission or the potential for vaccine escapements. And we definitely will be treating, treating the situation, this case or potential cases, with the conservative approach until we know more. And the knowledge about this variant is being updated on daily basis. What I heard yesterday afternoon probably is, is not up to date comparing to what we're going to hear later today. And, and I believe what the province is putting forward is a full information. Everything I know about the variant, I can see in the media and I can elaborate on it if need be from the council. Vaccine rollout in Crepeuse, it is slow but steady and it's same pattern provincially. We are behind the province, the provincial average by a number of personage point, less than five, not significant in the difference. And that is universally in Ontario. The difference in the coverage rate among health unit is not significant. And that can be attributed, this question that was, came up a couple of times. It is a relative safety we have in Crepeuse is one of the main factors, to the best of my assessment, where the vaccine hesitant residents are, don't have that incentive to get the vaccine comparing to areas in the province that are hotspots. The rural aspect of, of the versus urban is another part of the equation. If you look at the coverage across health units. It is, the urban centers would usually have higher coverage and of it, for obvious reasons, there could be a pharmacy in every neighborhood where access is, is more. Nevertheless, the, as I mentioned, the difference between health units in general is, is non-significance. And the results that we have and safety we have in Crepeuse speaks to that as well. That's my update and the comments on the minutes. I will put the question as always, your worship.
Thank you very much, Dr. Era. Are there any questions for Dr. Era? Counselor Kivany.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, Dr. Era. I'm wondering if there's any discussion at all about vaccines for children under five.
Through you, Chair. The vaccine for children under five is being looked at. And I, I have not seen any written direction on one that can happen, but usually the process takes weeks, not months after the approval. Sorry, it takes, it, it might take one or two months, week period, that it wouldn't be six months or so. But again, that's a, a process that starts with the pharmaceutical submitting their clinical trial studies. And the technical term is bridging studies to generalize the safety and efficacy from younger children to the younger, to the other group, less than five. And, and again, that might take a couple of months if everything checks out. And, and we'll keep you posted on, on that progress.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Milne.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and it's not a question. It's just a comment. My, both of my parents got their booster shots this Tuesday of this week in Durham at the community center. And I just wanted to pass along my thanks to Dr. Era and his team. The process went very well. They were very happy with the, with the folks that were there looking after them and it went without a hitch. So, thank you, Dr. Era and your team.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Patterson, was there anything you wanted to add?
Yes, thank you, Warden Hicks, and good morning, county council. As Dr. Era mentioned, it was good to see a bit of normality return to our board meeting. Dr. Era made a presentation to the board on a topic that was not related to COVID-19. The work of the Environmental Health and Tobacco Enforcement Team, which included food safety inspections and training, safe water for drinking, rabies and infectious diseases, as well as tobacco enforcement. So it was an interesting meeting, meeting to have a change from COVID. And another good news item is Alan Barfoot has been reappointed as a provincial appointee for two years. So we're pleased with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. I don't see any other hands, so it's time to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much, Dr. Era.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to item nine, bylaws. And we have three before us. Need a mover to put them on the floor. Counselor Kivany moves and Counselor Burley seconds. Is there any discussion on any of those bylaws? I'll call the question, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie, thank you. Okay, we're on to item number 10, good news and celebrations. Counselor Milne.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I don't know whether it's good news or celebrations or something else, but this week I was reading the old news in the Dundalk Herald. And ironically, given what we were here to do on Tuesday, it was noted in the old news that 50 years ago this week, Gray County Council voted not to elect the warden with a secret ballot. So openness and transparency is nothing new. So it, it would put a different flavor on the election if you had to stand up and say, I support whoever rather than a secret ballot. So just a little bit of trivia there. I don't know when we started doing the secret ballot. Maybe the clerk's department knows, I don't, but I just thought it was interesting to see that in the paper. Thank you.
Clerk says it was before her time. She was, she was just a baby. Okay, anyone else? Counselor Soever.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just like to report that last Saturday night, we had the official start of the Clarksburg Tour of Lights with the tree lighting in downtown Clarksburg at the Legion. And the event was a great success. Santa was there and there, it was a great turnout. We had about 100 people come out, which was a crowd for Clarksburg on a Saturday night. And so everything went well. And that's just the beginning of the Christmas festivities in the town of the Blue Mountains. Next weekend on December 11th, it's Old Fashioned Christmas in Thornbury. All day, there's a hidden Santa challenge and festive decor all around the town. We have live music, one to three, an arts and crafts show at the library, horse drawn wagon rides. At five o'clock, there's the holiday tree lighting at the town hall. And you can visit with Santa and one of his owls and bring your letters for him. Santa will be sitting on a horse drawn wagon at a comfortable distance from the crowds. There is also a dance party with Tyler Boyle and horse drawn wagon rides, fire barrels and roasted chestnuts hosted by our own firefighters. And you can get holiday pictures taken at the Georgian Life photo booth. So there's a lot of information on this on the BIA website, thornbury.ca/events/oldfashionedchristmas, oldest spelt with an E. And also in addition, St. George's, the Anglican parish for the Blue Mountains, has a free family Christmas tree lighting and carol sing-along outdoor at the church building at 166 Russell Street in Clarksburg. The St. George's and Grace United Church choirs will perform and lead the carol singing and there will be free song sheets, hot chocolate, tasty Timbits. I don't know if they're the Bieber bits or not, but a movie and candy canes for the kids. So Santa will also be there. And there's also a fountain of lights display and the lighting of the Christmas tree there. So hopefully you can all come out and enjoy the weekend. So that's it from the Blue Mountains.
Thank you very much, Counselor Soever. I can't say that I've ever roasted chestnuts over an open fire. So everybody will have their opportunity there for sure. Counselor Columbus.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and good morning, county council. Our deputy mayor just reminded me that I don't think we have made a public announcement, at least not in this arena, of a very special gift that our hospital has received, Meford Hospital Foundation received a donation of $1 million from a private individual. And this is to go specifically to creating a cataract surgical unit in our hospital. We're very, very excited about this. Of course, there will be other equipment purchased on, from this donation as well for the emergency services. So that is certainly something that we're celebrating in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mackey, you're next.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Good morning, county council. December 18th, the Taskworth Agricultural Society is having Christmas in the village. The Santa Claus parade will begin at 10:30 and then there's a variety of events that are scheduled after that. And just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas to my council colleagues and all of the staff at Gray County. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm surprised Counselor Milne didn't tell us about Saturday's events. Well, you have your chance now, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And yeah, of course, I forgot. I was going to do that when I was up earlier and I forgot typically. Holstein is going to welcome Santa back after a year of absence last year, missing the non-motorized Santa Claus parade. You're all invited to come on down and it maybe won't be quite as involved as, as it is in Blue Mountains, but nonetheless, the Jolly Old Elf will be there and maybe some elves, I don't know, smaller ones, who knows? But yeah, it's going to be a good event to come on down. It sounds like it's going to be a little milder, hopefully not wet, but it should be a good event nonetheless. So, thank you.
And thank you for that. Deputy Warden McQueen.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Warden and county council. And the last time, I think it was 2018, that I was at the Holstein parade as a warden, got into a traffic jam downtown Holstein. So that can happen once a year, yes. Want to be, just to, to follow up with others around the table, the spirit of Christmas, we had a successful tree lighting event by the Chamber Commerce on the 26th of November. And then on the 27th, Santa Claus parade was held in Markdale, which was a stationary, second year of a stationary parade. So the floats stayed put and everybody went by there, close to maybe 300 cars. The evening of the, of the 27th, we had a successful St. Hampton parade jointly with the fire department there, joined with folks from Clearview as well. And it was an evening parade with lights similar to other that have the light, lighting parade, small, they're all small parades, as people are getting back into the swing of live parades. And then last week in, on the, I think it was the 4th, 5th of December, we had a successful Santa Claus parade in Peverham that was put on by the local kinsman. And again, floats, small in number, but still mighty. And again, Santa Claus is doing well. So he's getting around to everybody's community and showing his red colors. So again, wanted to share that. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, sir. I think that's it. Savannah, come on up.
Good morning, county council. Here today with two really exciting introductions for you because we are in person and we've got a new staff and new community partner that we wanted to get in front of you today. So I'm going to start with our staff, Depeka Gupta. She has joined us as the Grey Bruce Local Immigration Partnership Coordinator. In October, she joined us. And I'm going to give her a few minutes to just introduce herself and let you know a little bit about her, but I don't know that she'll mention it. And I really want you to know that she comes to us with a PhD in human rights and duties from India that she received in 2017. And if that was not enough, she's doing her second PhD now in Canada, York University in Equity Studies. So she is phenomenal, a very smart cookie and a real gem. And I don't know that she would have told you that on her own. So I wanted to let you know that and I'm going to hand it over to her so she can tell you about her journey here. I know we don't have a lot of time, but she has found success finding a home. So I think you should hear that.
Good morning, county council. I'm Depeka Gupta, Grey Bruce Local Immigration Partnership Coordinator. And I'm very excited to be part of the team, which is working so hard to make many newcomers like me feel welcomed. I'm greatly looking forward to working and learning from other collaborators and partner council members, as well as other stakeholders from a variety of sectors to improve the coordination of and effective services, especially for immigrant resettlement, integration and retention. As we emerge from COVID-19 pandemic, I'm hopeful that with three Cs, that is collaboration, coordination and connection, we will aid in the creation of a welcoming community and inclusive community. I'm shivering. So, Mr. Warden, to be honest, I didn't know what to expect when I was given this opportunity to join as GBLIP coordinator. And I was thinking quite often that would the people be very friendly? Could I afford a house here I wanted to live in? And would my family feel welcomed here? And it was indeed a quite challenge finding a house here for a rent also. But, and I know that housing is a real challenge and county council is taking action to ensure individuals and families in Gray County will have more access to safe and affordable houses in coming times. But with the support, I would say immense support and strength from Economic Development, Tourism and Culture Department of Gray County, the answers to all my questions and fears was yes. In India, I was told that Canada is the land of opportunity. Whatever you can dream of, you can achieve. And I can say that statement is apt now because now I'm proud resident of On Sound as I'll be getting possession of my house in five days. So thank you so much for giving me this opportunity once again to make Gray County more welcoming community for immigrants like me. Thank you.
We are so lucky. I just can't stop beaming. I'm so, so excited to have Depeka with us. So you will see lots of her over the next while because we're going to have those update reports coming to you. But all the good work that she is working on, along with the whole partnership council committee of over, is it over 50 partners? 55 partners in the community have been pulled together for this important work. So really excited to see what happens next. And my second introduction is Dave Shory. Many of you have met him individually, but we haven't had the opportunity to get him here in front of council either. He's the new executive director for Georgian College, also joined in October. And I don't know if I'm driving him nuts or if it's a good partnership, but we talk almost every day because there's a lot of good work to be done. So I'm not going to take any of his thunder either. He's got lots to talk to you about, so I will hand it over to Dave for an introduction and welcome.
Good morning, council, and thanks so much for having me. Just for the record, Savannah's not driving you nuts. I, I am deeply appreciative of the relationship that we have between county council and Georgian College. Really, it was a very easy drive for me to be able to just head down the street. I, I want to begin with a thank you, a deep heartfelt thank you. Your support as we've just moved towards renovating the Seawing so that we can provide a, really a world-class Bachelor of Science in Nursing program and be able to, to upgrade those that are working in the field right now and prepare professionals for working in healthcare in the region. It's tremendous. And what a gift for me to be able to start in this role as this work has already happened. I'm benefiting from the work of many people over many years, but I wanted to begin with a thank you. Your financial contribution is significant. It allows for us to be able to train students and, and prepare them for the workforce and keep them in the area. The way that we do so now by delivering a Bachelor of Science in Nursing is that they do their first two years here and then they leave the area and they go to a larger urban center. And the research bears it out. When you have placements, your first job usually comes from your placement. And so it goes that we don't necessarily have our young people coming back to the region. So this is a big deal for us. There are other really good things going on at Georgian College in On Sound. And as I get my feet under me and learn more about what's going on, I can really see, we have a, a real asset in the community, both for Bruce and Gray County. I should say that I grew up in this area. I'm originally from Southampton. I went to high school just down the road at St. Mary's. This was a, a number of years ago. I, I went to the water region for, for two decades and worked in higher education before coming back and be able to work with the municipal innovation council over the last year. To be able to be in this position is a really special thing because I have an intersection between what I care about personally, that being this area, this region. I'm, I'm deeply invested in this region and the growth and success of this region, but also professionally in my work in higher education and more broadly in education is something that I have an opportunity to continue to, to advance here. So I won't wax on any further. I'll just say, thank you, and I, I look forward to working closely with you in the years to come.
Well, thank you very much, Dave. And I would say that we're very much looking forward to continuing that strong partnership with Georgian College. And to Depeka, I want to say, welcome to Gray County. And you mentioned you were nervous. There's no need to be nervous because you're among friends. Very welcome. Okay. Can I see your hand, Anne Marie? Oh. I was going to say sold. Okay, we're ready for a German, I believe, yes. Need a mover. Moved by Counselor Mackey, seconded by Counselor Carlton. Got it right. Got it right this time, yes. Okay. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Thanks very much. Okay, we'll take a second to flip over to committee of the whole.